Love the fact that Officer here too.
Talk to him.
That's from Mr. Thompson. Please, officer, in the back, right?
Oh, yeah. No. No.
The uppers.
Nope, I didn't get it. Okay. Okay.
Good, Mr. B., you are good.
That's all, that's all. Okay. Go from.
Andy, do you want to start signing? And we only have to have two of us sign them?
You're good?
The O's, yep.
We're always writing on random. School Board Meeting of March ninth, twenty twenty-two. I'm David Ryan, the Superintendent. Uh, with this organizational meeting. Uh, yesterday's, uh, vote. Uh, we welcome a new school board member. So with that, we will have to have, uh, votes for Chair and Vice Chair. At this time, I would be asking, uh, a nomination or a motion for a nomination for Chair of the school board.
I nominate Melissa Lyons.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
So there's a nomination and a second. Any discussion?
Nope.
Very good. Will you accept the nomination? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It carries, it's all yours. Chair Lyons.
Thank you. Thanks for everyone for coming tonight. I'd like to make a nomination. This is Chair. All those in favor? Do you accept the nomination? All those in favor, aye. Okay. And now we're going to swear in our new board member.
So she'll need the microphone.
Yep.
So you'll just need to read this top portion?
Uh, the whole portion.
Fill in your.
Okay. Okay. I Tiffany DeBrio of East Kingston, New Hampshire, do solemnly swear that I will bear faithful and true allegiance to the United States of America and the state of New Hampshire and will support the Constitution thereof. So help me God. I Tiffany DeBrio do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon me as East Kingston School Board Member according to the best of my abilities, agreeably to the rules and regulations of this Constitution and the laws of the state of New Hampshire. So help me God. And, I think that's it? Yep. Okay, now we're going to move on to a student leadership presentation.
Mr. B., thank you, sir. So, a few months ago, I talked about, uh, our student leaders throughout our school. We have many different jobs that our students, uh, apply for, interview for, and perform throughout the year. And, um, they were supposed to be here in December, believe it or not, and it was that long ago that I was not here because I was sick. And then we had our public hearing in, in January, and that was going to be a longer meeting, and then our February meeting was, uh, canceled because of the deliberative. So here they are in March. Uh, we have five students here, uh, from three different roles uh, throughout our building. And as I said, our students apply for, interview for, and perform these duties throughout the year. So I am going to turn it over to our first presenters, Sebby and Zoe.
Hello, EKES Board Members. My name is Sebby and my teacher's name is Ms. Ward. I am in fourth grade and my leadership role was morning announcer. I enjoyed my role because I got to help Mr. French by doing the morning announcing with Zoe. I also enjoy when I got to help the next morning announcers and I enjoy working with other people.
Hello, my name is Zoe. I'm in the fifth grade with Ms. Teton as my teacher. My leadership role was morning announcements. I wanted to do this job because I wanted to take on responsibilities. I really liked, and I really liked working with someone else.
So they, they had a script that they would use every day.
And they're going to perform an evening announcement for everyone here so you can actually hear and see what they would do every single morning.
Good evening, EKES.
My name is Zoe.
And my name is Sebby.
Today is March ninth, twenty twenty-two.
Today's weather forecast is cloudy with snow developing late. The current temperature is thirty-six degrees. The high today was, was thirty-eight degrees and the low tonight is twenty-seven degrees.
Please remember our three school roles. A King Fisher is always safe, respectful, and responsible.
Thank you to everyone in the East Kingston community for supporting our school. The staff and most importantly, us the students are proud to be King Fishers.
We would like to recognize Mrs. Jennifer Rans for her continued effort, uh, in supporting, in support over the years as a member of the East Kingston School Board. We would also like to welcome and congratulate our newest board member, Mrs. Tiffany DeBrio. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Have a wonderful Wednesday.
Nice job, guys.
All right, now we are going to have Reed come up here and talk to us about recycling. Reed is part of our recycling crew here at EKES.
Hello, my name is Reed Ian. I'm in five T and I am one-eighth of the recycling committee. Um, I am on recycling with Jack Lassard, Eli Smith, and Andrew Mayer. And the reason I signed up for recycling is to be able to help Mr. Mizzie, uh, because I know he has a lot to do in the day and it just takes some stuff off of what he needs to do overall. Also, so he doesn't have to try and cram in the time to go to every classroom in the school twice a week to go get the recycling. I do recycling on Wednesdays, which is usually after, like, our midweek recycling. And it's actually pretty fun to be able to go around and see different classrooms and just check up on how the kids are doing. And yes. Um, so here I have a poster that we made in the beginning of our class time because we were talking about, uh, recycling. Our two teachers, Mrs. Miller and Mrs. Teton, they are the heads of their recycling cle- crew. And, um, a lot of the things that they taught us is what's good for the environment. Cardboard, paper, plastic bottles and cans can be recycled. Yet styrofoam, plastic bags, waste, and other types of, um, plastic coated things, those cannot be recycled. Um, and then over eight million percent of the tra- over eight million percent of the water is covered in trash. Um, so over eight million pieces of trash in the ocean and it's just so harmful to the environment and it really needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you, Reed. Now, don't go too far because she's going to be back up, uh, along with Rowan and McKenna to talk about our theme team.
You want to just turn the mic and then just tell me when to.
The theme team.
Move closer.
By Reed Ian. Rowan DeQ.
Oh, sorry, Rowan.
By Rowan and Rowan DeQ.
And McKenna Higgins.
Good. All right.
Who are we? We are the theme team. Every, every month we meet in the library to talk about what, to talk about what's happening in our school and what we do for projects. We have three students in our theme team and our theme team leader is Mr. Stevens. But he's not the only one who we get help from. Mrs. Jellino, Ms. Cody, Ms. Smith, and Bu- and Ms. Bucknam.
What we do? The theme team takes care of big events that need plan- planning. So far, we planned the Harvest Festival, two Spirit Weeks, and the Winter Doors. Currently, we're pla- planning Read Across America. We take ideas from our fellow classmates for what we can do next.
Why do we do this? We join the th- theme team because we loved our school and wanted to help it. We really like making a difference in our school. We love to pla- to plan and help people. Theme team is so fun and we're so glad to join it. It's a great opportunity for fifth graders like us to feel like they are heard and that they're helping and being a big part of our school. Not just the teachers hosting team. We all share the job.
This helps us in our, wha- how does this affect our school? This helps us in our school. It helps us because it gives us responsibility and lets us use our creati- creativity. The schools benefit. It also helps our school, gives a posi- positive effect on our school and allows the students to have fun. It also unites us as a school because we're working together. Thank you for watching and thank you for watching our slides.
Nice job.
Amazing, amazing job, leaders. Thank you so much for joining us tonight. We're all set.
Nice job.
Back on? All right. Great. Thank you, guys. Sebby, Zoe, McKenna, Rowan, Reed. Awesome job, guys. It's been fun watching you guys grow since kindergarten into being the leaders of the school here. All right. Financials? Oh.
We'll move back a little.
Or I can move this one here.
I'm taller than Reed.
Yeah. Okay, so in your board pack was, uh, the financial for the month. We are comparing, um, to the board pack a few months ago since we haven't had a meeting. So that's why it seems to be a lot of expenses in here. Um, I did put all of the explanations. Did anybody have any questions? So since the last time we met, it, we did add fifty-five thousand six hundred and thirty-three dollars of expense. Most of that is due to special ed transportation, but we've also had an increase of supplies and encumbrance adjustments. And we've also added, it's not really Sergeant Camp anymore, but what used to be called Sergeant Camp. Nature's Classroom? Did anybody have any questions?
Uh, I just had a question. On the computers, the sixteen thousand eight hundred and forty, is that part of what we're purchasing in advance?
So, Brandon, if you want to talk to the purchase. Yes, we are going to be seeking reimbursement through the ECF fund and we're getting, I believe it's four hundred dollars per device back.
Okay. On the, is that for iPads and Chromebooks, four hundred each?
Correct. And you have to purchase them and provide proof of purchase. So you have to pay for it before we can ask for the money back.
Okay.
Thank you. Lost my mic. Superintendent's report?
You're messing with me.
Yeah, pops out. Uh, so we did include a rather extensive Superintendent's report in with this, uh, with this pack. We want to follow the things that are happening uh, in the SAU office or around the SAU. Um, so if there were any questions that any one of you have relative to any of the items that we put in, it's a seven-page report. So it was pretty, it was pretty extensive.
So on the report, it says you have a high school GPA. Oh. Oh, you can't hear me?
A little bit closer.
Okay. Sorry. So, under the High School GPA System Study Group, it's going to meet on March twenty-second. Do you have a time and location for that?
I believe that's at three o'clock and it's at the SAU conference room. It's not a public meeting, though, Tiffany. It's a, a small study group of, uh, it's the first meeting, actually, of the small study group. It's going to grow from there and then the information's going to be brought back to the board and presented to the public at that time.
Okay. Yep. And then I just had another question on this, uh, report here. The, um, K to twelve district-wide survey would be given to all students?
So we have a, an opt-in letter that's going out in students' grades three through twelve under policy ILDs. Well, I forget the RSA number, but it's included in one of our policies.
So it's grades, starts at grade three?
Three through twelve, yeah. It'll go to all parents, uh, but it is, um, only going to go to those students whose families opt students in, uh, by policy.
It just says kindergarten here, so that I was just.
On the, the Kit, the New Hampshire, the climate survey?
Yep.
Um, can you tell me which page it is?
Uh.
They're not paginated, so of course that made it easy.
Page. Page fourteen of the board packet.
Fourteen of twenty-seven.
Bold item number three into four.
Station time, I'll come look.
Okay. So I just, so right here.
Or right before that, okay. That helps me.
Okay.
So, originally, this was a K to twelve district-wide survey as one of the goals of the Superintendent's Office. And so when we were working with the balanced scorecard and looking to better understand and measure where students and family members were in, in terms of their, um, their engagement in the district, uh, their sense of belonging, um, their vision for success and how well their students are engaged and from students, how safe they feel, how trusted they feel. When we looked for a climate survey that could meet us uh, there with all of the, the data for, uh, or the appropriate questions for those data, um, there was nothing under grade three that would yield that for students. All parents will receive it, but it'll just be students in grades three through twelve.
Okay, thanks for that clarification. And then also, too, I was on the Compre- Comprehensive School Climate Inventory website and it gave sample questions for the types of surveys. Could the board see those, um, surveys ahead of time?
Sure. I'd be happy to share those. Yeah, we'll be sharing those with all boards.
Thank you.
Yes.
I have one more question, I think. So on the ADTF, the Anti-Discrimination Task Force update, uh, how many members are on that task force?
Uh, I believe right now there are eight or nine members that belong and that meet regularly.
Monthly, do they say?
They do. They meet monthly.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm good, thank you.
My pleasure.
All right, we're going to move on to approval of our meeting minutes. Uh, first, January fifth, the budget workshop minutes. Does anyone have any changes to those? All right, um, make a motion to approve the budget workshop minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Uh, January twelfth, twenty twenty-two, the public meeting minutes. Does anyone have any changes?
Madam Chair, this is a point of order. Only you and Mr. Herron will be able to respond to those. So there'll be abstentions from, from Ms. DeBrio.
On the public meeting minutes?
On all of the meeting minutes, yes.
All meeting minutes.
Yep.
Did you have any changes on the January twelfth? Okay, I also did not. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the January twelfth meeting minutes.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, then we have the East Kingston non-public meeting minutes from Wednesday, January twelfth. Um, I, I noted that these minutes don't include a time that we entered into the non-public or the time that we exited non-public. Um, I know the meeting was recorded. I don't, I don't have the time, so I don't think we can approve these yet. I think we need the, the time we entered the session and when we exited. And the final one, the, uh, February ninth, twenty twenty-two, public hearing minutes. Do you have any changes to those?
No.
I noted that we didn't catch the name of one of the speakers that evening. I don't see her name included in here. Uh, I'm guessing that possibly a comment made by somebody else is attributed incorrectly. So I, yeah, we can't, we can't approve these minutes. We're missing a name.
Do we have an ability to get that name?
Yeah. Just present here tonight. I think we're just missing your name with a comment in the meeting minutes. We'll talk afterwards and we can grab your name so that we can attribute your name to the, no. We have, we have, uh, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Ferris are, are in the meeting minutes. Um, but I believe you also, you also spoke at that meeting? Yeah, in the library. Yep. I just want to ensure that we attribute the correct statement. So I'll just check with you afterward as, I just want to make sure that we didn't, I believe we may have put both of your comments under Mrs. Ferris's name potentially. So I just want to clear that up. Okay, so we will wait on approval of that set of meeting minutes until next meeting. Uh, Principals' report.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to, again, um, I know Jennifer Rans isn't here, but I recognize her for supporting me as the principal the last two years. It's, it's, it's been a pleasure working with her and I'm really happy that Tiffany is on board and is going to do a great, a great work for our students and staff here at East Kingston. I want to start off by, um, just letting our board know, and I'm sure all of you already know this, but, um, we are going to have our spring musical, Beauty and the Beast, coming up two weeks from tomorrow's opening night. Uh, due to, you know, the, the concerns of COVID that we still have, um, it's going to be, um, each family's going to be allotted a certain amount of tickets. Um, it's not going to be open to our community at this time. Unfortunately, we just can't fit. Uh, we're still following the, the three to six feet, um, spacing guidelines. So, uh, we, we do not have room for, uh, with a hundred and something people that'll probably be attending for, for tickets per family. Uh, there's not enough room in here to space three to six feet for others to come. So our, our families will be getting that allotment of tickets. Our enrollment numbers, uh, have stayed the same over the last few months. We still have twenty-nine students at kindergarten, eleven in first grade, twenty-two in second grade, nineteen in third grade, twenty-eight in fourth grade, twenty-seven in fifth grade, for a total of one hundred thirty-six. Uh, yesterday, we had an amazing day of professional learning for all the staff throughout the SAU, uh, in, in particular here in East Kingston. We had a wonderful day of learning, uh, beginning at the high school yesterday where we had, uh, a wonderful keynote address from Dr. Macy and we split up, uh, for two sessions where staff throughout the SAU, uh, had opportunities to learn from their peers, which was amazing. I do want to recognize Mr. Stevens. He did a forty-five-minute presentation, uh, on student-led conferences that was phenomenal. And, um, he, he never gives himself enough credit for the work he does, uh, but he did wonderful things yesterday and was recognized by peers from, uh, uh, excuse me, from the SAU for, uh, not only his hard work, but his, his expertise in, in, in student-led conferences. So I'm, uh, definitely recognizing him for that. Uh, last month, we also, uh, we were randomly selected to be, um, one of the NAEP, uh, the National Assessment of Education Progress Schools. And, uh, I, I just, I want to, I want to highlight that our fourth graders were here. A hundred percent of our per, one hundred percent of our students participated in that NAEP assessment. And, um, the facilitators, uh, there are three women here that facilitated this, um, were praising us for one of being, uh, being one of the few schools that had one hundred percent participation. And she also just commented on, um, the, the behavior and the hard work and everything our students did that day. So they, they, they definitely get hu- high praise from me on that. I also want to thank Mr. Mizzie and Mr. Benjamin. You know, they often do things behind the scenes, but for our voting day yesterday, there was a lot to set up and take down to make sure our kids were ready to roll and they came in this morning and then prior to the vote yesterday. So just recognizing them for their work. And then lastly, I, I, I just want to thank our community for, um, their support as we, uh, passed our budget again. Uh, it's, it's two years in a row where we've had teacher contract and two budgets passed. Uh, I, I want to thank Molly O'Keefe and Michelle Larson and, and Dr. Ryan, uh, for their work with me to create a, a very fiscally responsible budget. And then, and then to Jen and Andy and Melissa for their, uh, support as we, you know, over the last two years, we've added a reading specialist, uh, to our school and we are now adding a math interventionist to our school, which is, it's so important to, uh, the well-being of our students. And, um, you know, we, we, we've really focused on those core academics, um, by adding those very important positions. Uh, we are continuing to work with our multi-tier system of support, providing interventions to our students, whether it's academically or behaviorally. And, uh, we are continuing to work with our math consultant, which is, she's received high praise throughout the SAU, not just from our staff here. Uh, we're currently, we developed a curriculum and assessment team here in our building. Uh, we have representatives from special ed, uh, from the primary grades, a representative from the intermediate grades, myself, a reading specialist. Uh, once we have the math specialist, she will be, he or she will be part of that team. And right now, we're taking a look at how are we assessing our students within our building? Um, and we want to make sure that we're assessing them. Uh, and we, and we're going to be using that data to inform our instruction and we, we really are stressing the vertical alignment of our assessments. So that, uh, team has started over the last couple of months and we will be really taking a look for the rest of this spring, um, to develop assessments that's going to benefit our students when we come back in September. Um, so it's, it, it's a wonderful team and, and, um, they're already doing great work. And then just lastly, we, we continue to be extremely proud of having our doors open every single day. And, um, uh, we're one of the few schools probably in the state of New Hampshire that have been open every single day since last fall and have never closed down for one day. So I want to continue to remind everyone of that, that we've been going strong for a year plus now. Any questions for me?
So the, um, National Assessment of Educational Progress, when will those results be in?
That's a great question. I don't have the answer to that right now, but I can get it for the next meeting.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Uh, Chair's report. Uh, Andy, you want to go first?
Oh, uh, yes.
I don't know if you guys met.
Committee reports, is that what we're talking? All right, so, uh, we did a community engagement meeting on, uh, February twenty-first of. All right, so we did a community engagement meeting on February 21st of this year. The first thing that we covered was we're... The third and fourth graders are going to be doing legacy letters. And they sent out, they've sent some to the community so far, and they've had really great response. So far, it's really popular. And they're working on trying to get those... Those are supposed to foster relationships within the community to members within the community, and so far, that's going really well. They are planning on expanding the letters to go not only to third and fourth grade, but second and first graders as well. And let's see here. So right now, it's random who they're sending them out to. It's just the letters are going out to the community, and then the community members can just pick them. From there, the idea is that they will then have a direct relationship with that community member going forward. And so right now, it's initially, everybody just kind of picks it out of the hat, and then there's a relationship moving forward that. And right now, there's 15 active pen pals that are going on, and as the demand increases, we're hoping to get some more. All right. We talked about getting a link for the candidates to Candidates Night, which happened, obviously. Congratulations again, Tiffany. And last thing was, there was a request by Mr. Branting for the budget in the future to come out, you know, ahead of time in the seven to 10 days range, so there's more time to review it and so forth. And so we're going to work on getting that for the next budget round. Did I miss anything that you can think of?
Safety and security?
No, no safety and security.
Okay. All right, so no safety and security. There's been no policy meetings in January and February. Our next meeting is March 24th at 6:00 PM. Superintendent evaluation. At our last non-public meeting, we discussed the superintendent's mid-year evaluation. Those mid-year evaluations were compiled and submitted to the superintendent. They followed along the goals that we discussed previously. The committee is meeting virtually this month at a date we have not determined yet to put together the survey that'll be sent to administrators and principals, and we're going to determine how far that goes out so that board members have additional feedback for the final evaluation. That's all we have for committee. Any old business? Anything new? All right, public input.
Nancy Parker, 11 Country Lane. First of all, congratulations to the new board member. I wondered if you would review the goals for the year with the data, the support, the performances. And I also, there's two parts to this. That was the first part. The second part is, when a new board member comes on board, what sort of training are they offered in order to fulfill the requirements of the job?
Do you want me to speak to that? Okay.
You've gone through it.
Yeah, I've gone through it. There's several different things, and it's kind of as much as you want to take in as far as information. The New Hampshire School Board Association offers a variety of webinars that you can attend. Those go on throughout the year. Sometimes they're very topic-specific about something that's coming up. For example, an election's coming up, and this is your first time going through the process. A lot of them are much more general, and some of them you can watch anytime. So kind of what is your general board role? There's lots of good information on their website. Additionally, the superintendent meets with all of our new board members to make sure that they understand the process, to make sure they understand where they can get information, and just to generally answer any questions they have.
The joint board organizational meeting as well?
Oh, and the joint board organizational meeting as well, which is in April? April.
And there'll be training there as well.
Okay. Oh, that's right. They have to go to a training before the meeting. That's right. That was a long time ago.
No, I just wondered if the work training...
Yes.
You know, it's hard just to come. Even if you come to the meetings regularly, you don't actually know before and after the launch.
Yes, very true. Luckily, Tiffany's been to a lot of our meetings, so hopefully she's ready to go.
Your question was about the goals.
About the goals?
Yes. Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Okay, well, we went through the goals at a prior meeting. I'm not sure I'm prepared to speak to metrics that you're looking for on each of them. Maybe we could talk about it offline, and then we could come back at the next meeting to have an idea of kind of what you're looking for?
No, I just thought because usually you have three goals for the year.
Yep.
And so I wondered if you met the goals or if you didn't, because in the past, in the past, a couple of years ago... A couple of years ago, it's not when this board particularly was here, but they just sort of passed over the goals. So they did say that the goals were 2018 to 2019. Came to 2019, and they said, oh, yes, well, we'll just have the same goals for next year. But there was no looking at the goals to see... You, I think you must remember this, Superintendent Ryan, because you interceded and made some new goals for the following year.
We did, yes.
Yeah, because it was just like they made the goals but didn't do anything about it. And there was no looking at them, seeing if they were met, if they weren't met, if they could be improved on. So I just wondered if that was continuing or if you were actually setting goals and then trying to meet them or changing them if you didn't meet them to something else.
Okay, and just so I'm clear, are you referring to board goals or to the superintendent's goals?
No, no, this is the board goals.
The board goals. Okay, thank you.
We did the...
We did the workshop.
Yeah.
We did a retreat in the summer.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think it would be good for us to look back at, you know, look back at the goals and see where we are as far as progress and what we need to do.
Are you making new goals after soon?
Annually, yep, yep, which I think we'll do again in the summer.
Yeah. So specifically, we had a board workshop in, I think it was August, where we did specifically that. We reviewed the goals, set new goals for this upcoming year, and reviewed the previous goals from last year, evaluated how we did, and so forth. I've got a note here. I'll try to dig up the notes for that and get those over to you, so.
I know you usually have the goals on the agenda, I think, at the top of the agenda.
Yeah, and in that workshop, in that workshop, we did review all that, so.
Mr. Branting?
At the February 9th meeting, which was under the auspices of the RSA 19820-B3, we had some discussions on that. I looked up the RSA, and it says that notice of the time, place, and subject of such hearings should be published in a newspaper of general circulation in the relevant municipality at least seven days before the meeting is held. What newspaper contained that, and what was the... What edition was it in?
Do you remember which one? When we do our public postings? Seacoast Online?
We can send them.
It was Seacoast Online, and we can have it sent to you.
That's not a newspaper. I mean, the... This is, the problem is that we've got a lot of elderly people. One, they don't have computers, or they're unable to negotiate. You know, the websites and all. This RSA says a newspaper. We've got the Carriage Town News, which is delivered to every, you know, location in East Kingston. The elderly are being left behind, and we were discussing taxpayer money. There's no way that somebody that doesn't have a computer would have known that that meeting went on. You know, I've talked before about the fact, you know, that not everybody has a computer. Either the school needs to buy everyone a computer and give them adequate training, or you need to change the way you run things. The elderly are just being left behind. You know, you talk about inclusion. You talk about equity. There is no inclusion and equity.
Okay, thank you. We will look into making sure that it's included into a printed newspaper in the future.
What about the taxpayers' money that we discussed on February 9th?
No, that's what I'm referring to. In the future, although what we did complies with the RSA, we will be sure to include it in a printed publication. Okay, Mike Thompson?
Hi, first, sorry. Congratulations, everyone, all new positions. That also seems like an appropriate time to address something along with the elections. So I just want to be clear that the people of East Kingston did not vote for anyone who won on the co-op. So for example, Ted Lloyd, East Kingston voted for Ted Lloyd, but because Exeter has so many people, he doesn't get that seat. And that's true for all of the co-op board members. In fact, there's not a single member on the co-op board that was voted for by the people of East Kingston. So I just want to get your feelings for how you feel. You know, where do your responsibilities lie with representing the people of East Kingston versus other entities such as the co-op or Mr. Ryan? The way I see it, and I think the people of East Kingston see it, is the funding for this school comes from us. You are elected by us. We have told you what we want, by who we elected. The fact that those people didn't get on that board doesn't change at all what the people of East Kingston want. So I just want to be clear that when you are voting on policies, whether it's here or at the joint meeting, any policies that you're implementing that match the co-op, you are in opposition to the people of East Kingston. And to me, you don't answer to the co-op, you don't answer to Mr. Ryan, you don't answer to SAU 16, you answer to us. And so anytime that you are implementing policies at this school or voting at the joint board, and you are, for example, voting along with Kim Casey, be clear that the people of East Kingston did not vote for her. They did not vote for her policies. So when you vote along with her or anyone else on the co-op board, you are voting in opposition to the people of East Kingston. So I'd like to hear from you guys how you view that, how you view your responsibilities to represent this town versus your responsibilities to fit in with your colleagues. I don't know if you want to respond to that now, or I have two other things to say.
I vote for what I feel is best for the school, the community, and on each individual item.
Is it your personal opinion, or do you feel that you should represent the constituents?
I vote what is best for the school and the community of East Kingston on each individual item.
Any other comments?
So I think that East Kingston should decide who we send as our representative.
No, that's a separate thing. I'm really talking at you guys. When it comes time to implementing policies or voting at the joint board level, I've brought this up before, that the board here votes completely along lines just yes, whatever the administration wants and whatever the co-op wants. And that seems to be a problem. That's not what the people of East Kingston are voting for. We've had discussions before, debates about what the people of East Kingston want, and they've made it clear yesterday. They didn't vote for any of those people. My ballot matched 100% of what the people of East Kingston want. And there are some of you up there, which I would bet that not a single one of your votes matched what the town of East Kingston wants. And so that's concerning, because I see the policies that you guys are voting on, they don't match what we want.
Okay, thank you, Mike. I think we get your point. There's two, obviously, different sides. I don't think we have a 99 to 1%. So when you look at some of those votes from East Kingston, some of them are very close. I think we all can have different viewpoints. I'm going to take everything that you say, everything that everyone here says, the parents that I speak to, the students that I speak to, and make a decision. It's not my personal decision. There's a lot of decisions that we've made as a board that aren't my personal decision. Okay, do you have another comment?
Sure.
Thanks.
So with masks, at the last joint board meeting, the public wanted a vote on masks, wanted to talk about masks. Others, including Mr. Ryan especially, made it clear that the joint board doesn't make those decisions. And that's correct. And made it very clear to take that up with your local boards. At the January meeting, some of us brought that up. The East Kingston board did not want to discuss it at all, shut that down. And the response was that we need to wait for the joint board to meet and then give their recommendations on what they got from the experts that they were waiting for. So already, that's problematic. The joint board said, Mr. Ryan says, "Take it up locally." We take it up locally, and he said, "We don't want to hear it. We'll talk to you on March 9th about it after we meet with the experts." However, obviously, there's no masks anymore, which means that that wasn't true. So the way I understand it, Mr. Ryan unilaterally made the decision that masks were not needed without even having a board meeting. So that meeting on the 24th never happened. So one question is, you know, aren't you guys upset that you didn't get the information you needed in order to make a decision on masks? It seems that you weren't unable to do it without that meeting. You never got that meeting. So I assume that you guys are fighting that decision to remove masks because you never got your info. And number two, being told that Mr. Ryan or that the joint board can't remove masks, yet that is what happened, and there was no public hearing, there was no public meeting. It's, that doesn't, that seems a little shady. Ask them, go ask them, back and forth, and then reality didn't even match what we were told.
Okay, I'll speak to that briefly.
Sure.
You brought up masks at a February meeting that we had. That meeting was a special meeting, and that item was not on the agenda.
You can add it.
Can you, please don't interrupt. It was not on the agenda. Masks have been a contentious issue throughout the past two years. There are parents at this school on both sides of the aisle, and we are not going to make a decision like that. At least I will never, as a board member, make a decision about something like that when parents don't have notice and it's not on the agenda. That's not going to happen. I wanted masks off our kids months ago. My personal opinion isn't relevant. What I wanted to do on February to remove masks doesn't even play into that.
With regards to the joint board, the joint board was meeting to have a discussion with regards to experts regarding masks and so forth. The state came down and had a new guidance with regards to school that said masks were no longer required. Therefore, the SAU office, based on that new guidance, said that masks were no longer required at the school, only recommended. When it comes down from the state, then the SAU office can make a dictation going forward. It was that simple. We were going to vote on today regarding masks. I mean, there was nothing shady going on. This was pretty straightforward.
I understand how, I understand what happened, but that doesn't match what we were told. It couldn't happen that way. Miss Lyons just...
No, with regards to the joint...
Can I speak without being interrupted, please? Miss Lyons just said that she would not, and yourself, you wanted the information on the 24th to make an informed decision. You didn't get that. So I'm curious, how are you going along with the decision?
Because the state gave that information. The state came down with that information the day before, I believe it was, that gave all the information that we were looking for. They had a big meeting. Sununu was there, and they gave all the information that said masks are no longer required within schools. It was, all that information was given in a press conference. That was the information I was looking for. It also state dictate changed. Straightforward.
Okay, so to you, the information from the state was sufficient to replace the information you expected on the 24th?
Along with the change in guidance.
Okay. One other thing, standardized tests. So some of you at both meetings here, other meetings, and on social media have dismissed standardized tests. I think there's a lack of understanding about how standardized tests work. So if I take the SAT today, whether I do poorly or great on it, isn't the best example, representation of me. Depends how I was that day. But if 50 of us take that exam and compare it to 50 other people, that's a valid way to compare these 50 versus those 50. It's valid to compare two different groups who took the same test at the same time. It's also valid to compare the same group who took the test a year ago. It's also valid to compare the same group who took the test a year ago and then took it again today. Those are completely valid. I think it's irresponsible to dismiss standardized tests as a way to basically dismiss the rankings that none of us like. I've gone back and looked, and SAU 16, and in particular, Exeter High School, for years touted those scores and their rankings. So I don't know if you guys were here or not, but certainly it is inconsistent to tout those rankings and then later say, "Oh, they don't count because they're based on standardized tests," and standardized tests do not count. So I just want to throw it out there that that is, I think it's irresponsible to be doing that. Like I said, I've seen it from several of you, both at these meetings and.
Mike, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. We've well allowed you to exceed three minutes.
Well, the three minutes and counting you guys talking as well.
No, it's been, it's been well beyond that. We get the point about standardized test scores. Do you have anything else?
I have one more. So, and this one's just to make it officially part of the record. Because I haven't heard from any of you, I brought it up at the last board meeting. There was an error, procedural error, on the budget warrant that was submitted to the Department of Revenue. At your request or at your suggestion, I contacted Molly about it. Not sure if Molly chose to forward that anywhere or not, but it seems not. So just making you aware that there was a procedural error on that. The form for the budget was not completely and accurately filled out. There's a procedure to correct that. To my knowledge, it's not going to happen. So I just want to make that known publicly, so it's in the minutes, so that all of you are aware, so that later, if a problem comes up, if someone raised a legal problem with that, you have all been made aware of that, and there's a record that that was made aware of. I can fill any of you in. If you don't know what's going on, I'll gladly fill you in on that. Ms. Lyons, I think I've sent emails to you. I've never heard back from you. I would like to hear back from you and get some resolution to that and a few other things. Do I have your right email address? Because I haven't heard back from you. Have you gotten my emails?
You do have my correct email.
So you've gotten them?
Well, I believe Jen.
You've gotten my emails?
I have received your emails, and I believe Jen responded to your emails.
Jen's on the board.
But she responded, your emails didn't occur yesterday. They occurred a week ago.
She directed me to talk to you about it.
But she already replied to you. Are you looking for a different answer?
Do you not want to respond to my emails?
Your email suggested that we could not be collecting your address and your name as a speaker.
Oh, that's one of them, but yes.
That was the main piece.
Okay.
There is nothing wrong with us collecting a name and an address.
I didn't raise that issue, but since you brought it up, I will respond. Go ahead.
Okay. This is a tradition that's kind of long-held in New Hampshire, particularly in small towns, to identify yourself with your name and your address. We've done it at deliberative sessions for as long as I can remember. We've made it part of our board policy to do that, and it's so that everybody understands who their neighbors are and who's speaking.
That's great, yeah. And I agree with that.
And we're not using it for any sort of research purposes or the other RSA that you referenced.
I agree. It's the same RSA. It's one RSA. It's RSA 91A.
But it's a separate piece.
So I actually am not sure if you've read my email, because my email's not about you collecting it. Of course, you can ask us who we are. Yes, you should. So we're in agreement on that. The issue is, is that that same RSA prohibits you from sharing direct identifying data and for you to, for any purpose, and for you to share that, right there, it's being shared right now. And when you put that in the meeting minutes, it's publicly available with no restrictions on who has access to that information or what they do with it. So that's the issue that I point out. Not that you're asking for it. I have no problem with you asking for it. I have a problem with you making it publicly available with no safeguards against my wishes. And the law says you can't do it.
Okay, I'm going to disagree with you on that. Okay, Lori?
Hi. So I don't know, Melissa, if you can answer this or if you, Ryan, could answer it. So for the co-op, when we've, as a town, vote for the co-op, everyone gets to vote for each position. Is that a joint board regulation or is that a state regulation?
Are you asking when you vote for cooperative?
Yes. Why do the other towns get to vote for the?
Between Ms. Casey or Mr. Lloyd?
Right.
When you cast your vote?
Or, you know, we vote for all the towns.
So all towns vote for all cooperative candidates?
Is that a joint, like, who makes that, who made that law? Is it the state?
It's at the state level.
Okay. So that answers that question. The second question is for you, Principal French, the NAEPs, is that what it's called, assessment? I wasn't aware what that was, and I would like, if you could share what that assessment shows for the fourth graders?
Right now, or do you want me to send it to you?
If you want to give like a quick synopsis.
It assesses fourth graders from all around the country. It's not just New Hampshire. All around the country are assessed in reading or math. Schools and students are randomly selected. For us, because we're a small school, all of our fourth graders participated, but some of our larger schools' students are randomly selected. And it's really just a national report card to see how our fourth graders are doing in reading or math.
Thank you.
Yep.
And then the last comment is for you, Melissa. So for the, just to make it known, for the last meeting for February, I did ask a week in advance for the masks to be put on the agenda and was told no to make it available so the public could be aware that it would be voted on. And I was told no. We don't have to have a further discussion, but I did try to make that available to the public, because I agree the public should be aware on big topics to show up and vote.
Okay, thank you. I was not aware that you had requested that in the agenda.
No worries.
Yep, Mr. Branting?
I just wanted to follow up. I asked a question about the addition of the, and the date for, to satisfy this RSA 198. Are you going to be sending that to me? And also, who was, you said it was determined that that was legal. Could you, you know, tell me who made that determination as far as the legality goes? Thank you.
So I just wanted to follow up with one of the topics that Mr. Thompson mentioned. So at the last meeting, you had stated that even if we went to a mask optional matrix, that you would still, that we would still have the meeting on the 24th to get the information that was in the toolkit to the parents. And you said that we would still have that meeting, and then you canceled it. So I'd like you to speak to that. And I also think it would be great for the parents to get this information. And I wondered if we could email that out to the parents, to the families.
Who are you referring to?
The children COVID and the urgency of normal.
The urgency toolkit, one of the items that we sent out there.
Yeah, so the local doctors were going to discuss this. And it was my understanding, when I left last month, that we were still going to have this meeting. And so I didn't know if we could email that out.
That we're appearing, we're going to be debating that, as there's much contention around the veracity of the information that's contained in that toolkit.
Okay.
So Dr. is the chief medical officer at Exeter Health Resources, and Dr. Daniel Kim, who produced the toolkit for us. The two of them were going to debate with each other in front of the joint board regarding the veracity of the contents of that toolkit. How the meeting was canceled was the day before, when the information came from the governor's office and then the Department of Education. It rendered the mask matrix that we used obsolete because of the conditions that the Department of Health and Human Services were using to make decisions were no longer valid. And so they were the very conditions we were using for that matrix. And so we had anticipated this matrix going by the wayside. We had said that publicly beginning back in January. I contacted Travis Thompson, who's the chair of the joint board, and the joint board is my boss, all 33 people around that table, and asked him what his thoughts were and if he wanted to move forward, given that we were no longer able to use a mask matrix, that the state was telling us that we could no longer require masks in school. That the Commissioner of Education had sent out a technical advisory around 5:30 indicating that the minimum academic standards under ED 306 had then changed relative to masking. He said, "It doesn't sound like we have a leg to stand on that the state has stepped in and made that decision for us. And therefore, we're not able to enforce masking in schools." And we said, "Okay, let me contact each board chair and see how they would like to move forward in each of their individual districts." So with Travis being the chair of the joint board, he did ask me to cancel the joint board meeting, which I did. I then called each of the seven chairs. We spoke first with Jen Rans, and she agreed that, given that the information was now available to us and that we were provided with directions from the state as well as the Department of Education, that we would, that East Kingston would not need to meet, would not need to make a decision on it because the decision was no longer a valid one to make. And the remaining six chairs agreed to that. So we had all seven board chairs and the joint board chair all agree that all of the parameters around masking had changed, and therefore, it was no longer within our authority to either require masking, and therefore, no longer needed to have that meeting to debate the toolkit.
Okay, so this toolkit, I look at it as a resource, because it's not someone's opinion or two doctors, you know, kind of, you know, publicly going over the information. I feel like it's data, and it's the latest data. And I do feel like that it should be made available to our families, because it is important information. And I respect the decisions and how we got, you know, to where we got. I think that really wasn't the question. I think it was just, can we get this to the families that would like it?
I'm not comfortable sending that to families. I'd rather have an action from the board to compel me to do so.
Okay. Did you want to speak on this? So I would like to make a motion to send this COVID toolkit out to families. It was, um. Oh, sorry, sorry. I think we need more microphones. So the information that was contained in the toolkit, I don't have all the pages in front of me, but it was latest data, statistics on vaccination, illness. It talked about depression, suicide, anxiety, and just different symptoms that children were experiencing during the pandemic. And it was just a good resource, because it was a bunch of updated information in one central location. It was published on the 24th of January 2022. And this information was going to be publicly discussed at the February 24th meeting that was canceled. So I'm just suggesting that people wanted to go to that meeting to get that information, regardless if kids had to wear masks or not. And I would just like to get that information out there. So whether we post that on our website or we email it to families directly, I mean, I would be even fine with just posting it on the website, so.
It's. Yeah, it, it's not completely, the statement of it's just facts and unbiased, I feel is not valid. There's really two sides, and the purpose of that meeting was going to be to discuss the other side of it. I would not feel comfortable pushing it forward as facts or something from the school in that case. I don't know if you have an opinion on it?
Without having the full report in front of me or knowing who published it or which doctors are speaking to it or seeing any of the data, I don't think it makes sense for us to put information, which I think is clearly biased in some ways towards one side or another. And we haven't put information like this on, at any point over the past two years. And then now that we're kind of, we're past this, or out of masks, and we're, kids are back at school, I think, I just don't think there's any reason to do it.
That's the info we all waited for.
Mrs. Miller, would you like to say something?
I'm Carol Miller, 14 Pheasant Run. And I have a question about the state exams and the phenomenon that we found ourselves in for people who decided to opt out their children. And Mr. French, would you mind explaining that a little bit to people?
Sure. So the state has a 95%, they expect at least 95% of our students to participate in the New Hampshire state assessments. If you fall below 95%, for us, last year was 85%. So if you fall below the 95% participation rate, the state does count the scores of those students as zeros. So for us, 85% of our students did not participate, I'm sorry, 85% of our students participated in the assessment. So 10% of our students, based on, I don't remember what the RSA was, 10% of our students were counted as zeros for those state assessments last year.
They were not. They were actually in RSA to make it exact last year.
So it's my understanding that during the pandemic, the state did not calculate zeros into the equation. And it was just accurate data reporting with no zeros added in to compensate from that 85 to that 95 participation. And so I would like clarification on that. Mr. Ryan?
Yep, we'll be happy to get the clarification.
Thank you.
Yep. I know we've already reached out to Amy White in the Assessment Bureau, and we have yet to hear back from her.
Okay, so we do not know at this time?
This is a two-week-old request to the Assessment Bureau.
Okay, all right, cool. Thank you.
All right, so looking forward, our meetings have been held at 5:30 on the second Wednesday of each month. So that falls on April 13th, May 11th, and June 8th. Because we made this calendar prior to Tiffany joining the board. Tiffany, I just want to confirm that those dates and times are okay with you? Okay, great. I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:41.